Okay, first item on the agenda, naming rights, follow-up discussion, Madam City Attorney.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the commissions. My pleasure this morning to present to you some of the research that our office undertook, based on direction given by the commission to look at the possibility for additional revenue generating opportunities for the city. So, I figured we would start with what we have currently in place. And if you are aware or not aware, we have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And that committee actually has implemented and adopted rules and naming policies as it relates to parks and park facilities, park property. Their rules that were adopted apply to all parks, facilities, major features within the park. It requires a written request by someone looking for a naming or renaming opportunity. Prac will review, receive, review, and recommend approval of the naming request to the commission. The commission will ultimately decide. I haven't seen one of them come up in my tenure. It could have happened, but they do have some rules established that is a nice starting point where guidelines for other rules you may wish to adopt formally by the commission. We also do naming by contract. An example is the library. So, the Mandel Library created a 501(c)(3) organization whose task was to raise funds to help with the construction of the library and other things. So, in the agreement, the foundation has the ability to take requests, naming rights requests. The requirements are that the rights would be in perpetuity to the individual or entity requesting the naming rights. There is a $100,000 minimum donation that can be paid over a 10-year period. It's ratified, the naming opportunities are ratified by the commission. The funds are placed specifically into the library fund for the library purposes. And there's a monthly report on those fundraising activities to the city administration. So, that's what we currently have in place. So, we looked at a number of, a number of local government entities, both inside the state and outside the state of Florida. This presentation focuses on some of our neighboring communities and what they have in place. The first code that we're going to look at is the Miami-Dade County Code. It has a marketing partnership program, which really focuses more on sponsorship agreements. The city too does sponsorships for events. But their sponsorship program, much like ours, gives the third-party commercial vendor the opportunity to market in exchange for money or in-kind services. Their mayor has the authority to approve these agreements without bringing it to the commission if they're under $1 million and they're event-related. Non-event-related agreements over $1 million and non-event-related agreements at all come to the commission for approval. Then Miami Beach, we also looked at their ordinance. They have an ordinance in place that gives some parameters for naming rights for public facilities, monuments, and memorials. It applies to all facilities located in and owned by the city. The requests are reviewed by a committee. They look at all of the terms that are proposed, including monetary terms and conditions. They make recommendations to the commission. The commission approval is, requires a supermajority. And if it's an external, exterior public facility, and it's to be named after someone who is living, the person has to be more than 100 years of age. If they're less than 100 years of age, there's some other requirements. And it also requires to go to referendum by vote of the community. Broward County Code of Ordinances also has ordinance provisions about naming rights for its property. Again, it's a written request. Shouldn't be named after living persons. There's a 90-day waiting period following the death of someone. If it's an organization, there are some factors that they can consider in deciding whether or not that organization should be used. The, if it's named after a person, it has to be published on an agenda that is at least one month before the naming rights are actually approved. They also take community input. And it's, their regulations are not applicable to naming rights that are sold by agreement. Obviously, similar to our agreements, those agreements would come specifically to the commission for approval. So, Wilton Manor also established a policy, but that policy was adopted by resolution. It applies to all of its amenities, buildings, parks, streets, recreational areas and facilities. You have to forgive me for reading because I can't remember all of their terms and conditions without, without reading to it. So, the applications are submitted directly to the city manager there in Wilton Manor's. The manager reviews it for completeness and documentation. If it's to be named after a person who is deceased, there's also a request or requirement that the next can approve the request. There is input by the public at two separate commission meetings. The commission approval is by resolution only. The commission may also negotiate agreements memorializing terms and conditions relating to the granting of naming rights. And the commission has final approval and an absolute discretion to grant or deny for any reason or no reason at all requests. Pinellas County also adopted their policies by resolution. They have, they have a series of resolutions. There's three of them. One that looks at honorary naming rights, philanthropic naming rights, and also corporate naming rights. So, in their guidelines, they specifically identify sponsorship agreements where they permit third parties to come in again. Those parties can have the right to name an asset or a venue, and they're sold for either a cash or in-kind contributions. The honorary naming rights also require commission approval. Generally, they come with no monetary consideration. The philanthropic naming rights require a submission of an individual naming rights plan so that they outline what the plan is for the naming rights. It also would include a requirement that there is a committee that looks at the plan and that that is then recommended to and approved by the commission by resolution. St. Petersburg has a very small ordinance section. It applies to the naming of all lands. Anything that's named in St. Petersburg is named and approved by ordinance, and it's included in their ordinances. They also have a stipulation that their namings cannot be named after a living person unless that person has made exceptional contributions for a specific purpose or a project. Or similarly to probably like our Curry Park donation of land, it was a stipulation in the donation that, that the property be named after the donor.
Madam City Attorney, what is a geographic feather?
Features.
Oh, features.
That is a, a type of graphical error.
Okay, so it's geographic features?
Yes.
Okay.
Unpicked up by my reading eyes and by spell check because it is spelled correctly, and for that I apologize.
No, it's okay. I didn't know what it was. It's not a thing. It's, okay.
I didn't click through fast enough for you to get your eyes off of that error. I apologize. So, those are the main ordinances and resolutions by various communities in the state of Florida that we looked at. We also, as I said, looked at some across in California, Savannah, Georgia, and others that could, could give us some additional considerations in drafting if, if that's the will of this body. Some considerations that you will want to think about, who is eligible for acquiring naming rights. Are we going to regulate as to honorary, corporate, or philanthropic name, naming rights endeavors? When we look at the city of West Palm Beach, certainly we have on a case-by-case basis done some of those philanthropic naming rights through the Grassy Waters Conservancy and through the Mandel Public Library. We'll also want to look at what fees should be charged. Is there an application fee? Are there specific naming rights opportunities, fees for various things? And I'll give you an example. This was a chart that was used in one of the out-of-state entities that we looked at. And as you can see, they went through and they identified what are the facilities, the amenities, where they located, what would be the range of fees they would want to charge for those. The naming rights lasting from five years through 20 years with escalating fees attributable to the amount of time that the name remained. We'd also want to find out, well, which properties should be included, much like the slide we just looked at, is parks, streets, programs or events, facilities, the interior or exterior structures like plazas, courtyards, gardens, lobbies, programs, and meeting rooms. We would also want to consider when would the naming opportunities arise and under what conditions? Do you want it to be living, non-living? What are the parameters? Is it construction of new city facilities only? Renaming of existing facilities, programs, and events? Or naming and non-naming of existing city facilities, programs, or events? And with that, we're looking for a direction as to what actions you wish for us to take as it relates to a formal naming rights policy, if any. And based on that direction, we'll look at best path to move forward and do an additional presentation of proposed changes, or creation actually, of an ordinance that regulates naming rights.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And if I recall quick, I think Commissioner Funks, you were kind of the one who was, wanted this discussion. So, any comments you want to make related to your interest in this?
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was very thorough and interesting to see what the other, our neighboring cities are doing. I guess, my first question is, I think in one of the first slides, you mentioned that our parks program already has something like this in place. I didn't, I don't remember if you told us if there were any guidelines that they have that they're following in terms of corporate or philanthropic or what, any other parameters that they already have in place.
There are really more of it. Now, I will, following this meeting, send you a copy of what was adopted by that body and what guidelines they look at if there is a request that comes in. As I said, I don't, as I stand here, recall a specific time that they actually brought forward a recommendation. Oh, Leah.
Good morning, Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Rec. So, we, we have had a couple, probably not since completely been here, where we've had the community come forward and request for an element in a park to be named after them. For instance, there's a gazebo at Chillingworth Park that the community came to Prac and requested because that individual was a community leader for years, and they wanted to make sure that they had something in the park named after them. So, there is a small gazebo at Chillingworth Park that is named after that individual. So, typically, it's the community coming to us and asking to have elements. And because we had so many people asking us years ago, we had to come up with some sort of guideline in which to work within. Otherwise, we'd have, you know, things named after people that have, since, we would not have wanted things to be named after. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a very clear policy in the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee of how we could go about naming things after them. So, does that kind of answer your question? People generally come to us. I can tell you that, for instance, we have one of our parks that is currently about to undergo renovations through the bond and hopefully with some additional funding from the CRA and in partnership with the Housing Authority. And the park is named after a foundation or a family foundation that their contract with the city is about to sunset. So, we would like to go and ask them if they would like the park to be, continue to be named after their foundation and the family. And if so, that they would have to come back with some, yes, exactly, Mayor, with some, some money to have it named after them again. And, and in today's dollars, not in the dollars from 1998-ish. So, we're going to be working on that. So, we, instead of naming, renaming the park, we'd like to go to them first and ask them if they'd like to continue their contract with the city to have it named after the family. And if not, then we would then come to this board and, and figure out where we'll go from there.
Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner?
Thank you. Well, Leah, I was wondering if, do you have any concerns, I guess, about moving forward with any renaming of parks? Or are there some areas of parks, like the one you're talking about, that you think would be good examples for us to look at moving forward that might also, we could identify as looking for a sponsor or a philanthropic partner to work with?
Certainly, there's opportunities out there. I, I do believe there are some opportunities. But many of our parks are named after individuals who have either donated land or who have served in a significant role in creating the city or the park system. So, there might be elements within those parks that we could use, do some naming rights. But to change the names, I think we would, we would really have to go to the community and ask them how they feel and Parks and Rec Advisory Committee before we would go down that road. Because, for instance, Phipps Park was named after the Phipps family that donated that land to the city. So, to change that would require, I think, some, you know, maybe the skate park would have a different name or something like that. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Mayor, can I make a quick clarification on something?
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify because some of these ordinances that we saw that our city attorney presented combine naming rights with some, with historical designations and so forth. We do have, and we just recently updated, our Art Life West Palm Beach ordinance, which included the process for naming, whether it's a park or whatever, after historical figures. So, that's a totally different process. I just wanted to clarify that.
Commissioner Shof, and then Commissioner Warren, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. One, I'm supportive of moving this forward and getting some parameters around it. As part of that process, do we have a process for what could potentially happen down the line if we felt there was a need for a removal or reimbursement? Example, from the private sector within our city, there's a certain plaza that recently removed its name because it was no longer warranted by the residents of that building. So, in that same structure, if we were to accept a sponsorship, in essence, a 20-year sponsorship and 10 years down the line, for whatever reason, in the public opinion had shifted about that specific entity, do we have a process for removal and/or reimbursement of those monies to those parties if we chose to decertify them?
In, in the agreements that we would draft and create that would be blessed at the same time as the regulations, generally speaking, we would include the parameters that would be appropriate for removal if a condition warranted the removal and, and what those parameters would be. It would be included within the agreement because obviously each, each individual naming would come with, with an agreement, either sponsorship or otherwise, whatever the appropriate agreement was for that transaction.
Okay, so we would have a mechanism under certain conditions to be able to?
And we would probably include some of those broader categories of, of automatic right to withdraw in the ordinance itself. And let's say, for, for example, we decide that we're going to allow living people to be naming rights to living people if they made significant contributions. And at the time, it was a perfectly appropriate person from, from all that we knew. Fast forward 10 years, they're convicted of some crime. We would want to include some automatic right to remove those living persons' naming rights that were associated with the agreements in that event. So, we will have some automatic removal rights in, in the documentation that's signed and in the ordinance that's adopted.
Great, thank you. I want to just make sure we were protected from that point of view. My second question is, is there a mechanism that we can put into our, our resolution or our ordinance that would help create equity in this process? So, having sponsorship funds is typically excess funds that aren't needed for daily operations of business, et cetera. So, it's about an access to capital. And what it typically does is, is excludes Hispanic and communities of color from being able to contribute and have equal representation. And I think it's really important in a community like West Palm Beach that is extremely diverse to create those mechanisms so that we don't allow a disparity in this process. So, if there's a mechanism that we can use, and I don't know what that is, I don't know if others have that, or if it came up anywhere in your research, that allows us to have a program that ensures that we are allowing equitable access and creating those opportunities for communities of color?
We, I can tell you that in looking at the regulations that are on the books, they've been on the books for some time, so there are not specific equitable components contained within the regulations that we've reviewed. But certainly, we can look at if there's been regulations that are adopted in other areas that can transfer to a program like this that could be used. And I'm certainly willing to sit down with you and, and see if you have some specific ideas as well that, that we could work with. But we'll look for other examples in other areas that might work for this program as well.
Thank you. And Mayor, perhaps it's a topic for a subcommittee on your equity task force that may be able to contribute some ideas to that as well to try to make sure that we're creating that equitable process. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you. Those, I think those were great points, Commissioner Shof. As it relates to the, the process, Leah, you stated that people, that the community comes to us. And is there a application and a process that is available for people to review in, in the event that they're considering that?
They typically provide us with a letter, and, and they have to give us a reason. And then they come and present to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee why they feel that individual's name should be, for instance, the Addie Green Hall or the, I mean, that's about, let's go with the, because she's, because she gave us the money to build the building. The McDonald Wilson Center, the Mary McDonald Wilson Center. So, the community came to us and said, "We would like the building to be named after Mary McDonald Wilson because this is why." And they gave a litany of reasons as to what she did in the community, and in particular in that neighborhood, and for the growth of, of the youth in the community. So, they come to us, they do a presentation, and then the committee makes the decision. So, that's how it's been done, not necessarily an application, but certainly an application would be a cleaner way for us to go forward. And I, I also wanted to just address the equity issue. When we name rooms or buildings after people from the community, it's typically, it has in the past not been a commercial or a fundraising opportunity for the city or cash. It, it's just as a thank you to the family and to recognize the individual for the future. Just like the sickle cell, the naming of that building would, would be considered, or the community hub, yes, would, would be considered. So, it's, it's really based on doing the right thing for the community and acknowledging that individual. Like Jimmy Doc Horn, the tennis center was named after him.
And, and in my view, I would not want to, for us to use this as an emphasis on fundraising. I, I don't want to create the perception of West Palm Beach is for sale, or bits of pieces of West Palm Beach is for sale. So, I'd be more interested in coming up with a program that recognized significant contributions from, from individuals. And I, I like the, the focus on either they're, if they're living, they're over 100, or somebody's already passed, because I think that minimizes a chance that something will come out later that might embarrass the city. And, and I agree with Commissioner Shof that there should always be an interest in, in making this an equitable effort. Just some thoughts. What, did you have a follow-up?
No, it was really just to say that I believe that an application and process that would be very clear and clean and would show criteria and, and that we can build in that, that a letter is a part of the, the application process.
And if, if we were creating a program that actually specified how naming rights are, are awarded or assigned, I can tell you that, that we would want to have a very specific application process. I can tell you that some of the examples that we looked at included not only the public as, as applicants, but also provided a means for either commissioners, the mayor, or other elected officials to propose naming opportunities as well. And the second point that was raised about not just being monetary sale of city lands and property, that's the whole basis for the, the portion of the honorary naming rights, to honor someone based on their contributions and that type of thing. So, you would want to include the honorary prong and what that looks like and how that is accomplished as well in addition to the selling.
So, for the honorary prong, we do have the criteria. That, that actually, we do have an application process and a criteria in place within our Art and Public Places ordinance that was recently updated and included that new language in there. So, they do have to be deceased under the, under the existing ordinance.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much for the research and the presentation. I am definitely supportive of documenting the process because I do believe that that helps eliminate any disparities of individuals or groups of individuals who might not be aware of unwritten policy or procedures. So, regardless of if we move forward or not, I think that that would be nice to have and to publish and to make available to the public. I am definitely supportive of the honorary and the memorials ordinance that we already have in place. I think that that's great, and I'm appreciative that we don't charge for that. I don't think that we should. I think that's a great way to honor those individuals who have given so much to our city. But I am still interested in looking at if there are larger opportunities for the city to look into sponsorship or naming rights that, that could be sold if it is the will of this body. I'm not interested in nickel and diming the city, you know, the gazebo that Leah mentioned. Clearly, that's, that's not something that I, I would think would need to be considered in this. But I don't know if there are other buildings or structures within our city, and, and maybe there's only a handful of them that we might look at this opportunity for. I believe that that was in the vein of which this conversation was originally started a year ago.
Okay. Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think we've, we've had a number of discussions specifically surrounding Curry Park, of which Chenmore, that's working on Curry Park, has some structure for Commissioner Lambert's suggestion of what others have done on those major things. I, I hear and feel what the mayor is saying, and I agree. You know, we don't want to have West Palm Beach for sale, but also agree with Commissioner Lambert that if there are those strategic opportunities, I think that's, that's really what it's about, is, is striking that balance. And I guess I offer up that I've heard in many conversations from Chenmore that they have a structure in place, that they've seen what others have done. And maybe that's a basis to start to make sure we strike that balance and still fulfill the mayor's goals, make sure that we're in line with that, but also create some of those revenue opportunities because those dollars go directly back into our parks and create a better park. So, I guess I offer that up as a suggestion.
So, along those lines, for instance, Drea Park Neighborhood Association wants to put in that massive, beautiful, boundless playground for, for all. And in order to make that happen, it, it's a very, very expensive playground to install. And if they want to, they can, but they'd use up all of their bond money just basically on that playground. So, if there was a corporation or somebody out there that wanted to have a boundless playground named after them in Drea Park, certainly that's the type of element that I would see as an opportunity that we're talking about. And that's the type of opportunity that Chenmore is also looking at. So, that kind of gives you a, a real-life example of something in a park that is more than the normal purchase of a playground. It's something bigger, better, greater, that if we had a, a naming right or a sponsor of that playground, we could build something extraordinary.
Well, I, I think a starting point would be to identify those particular opportunities so that at least at the time we came up with a policy, resolution, or whatever it is that we're going to put together, there is a discussion and an agreement as to there is, uh, a discussion and an agreement as to the scope and the specific opportunities that were in mind by the policymakers at that time. And that can always be changed from commission to commission. Uh, but we at least have a, a sense and a, a healthy discussion and dialogue as to what we're talking about when it comes to that. Because again, I just don't want to get into a, a bunch of smaller types of things and, you know, twenty-five thousand here, fifty thousand there. I just, to me, it doesn't set the right tone. But there may be some more significant, uh, opportunities there that we could look at. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that since our last discussion on this issue, I've had several companies call me, and probably we all have. But, um, one of them in particular was a company from Cleveland that Mark Parks had referenced to us in our last discussion. That was someone he worked with. And so they called. And so there are many other things that go along with some of the naming opportunities. For example, Coke and Pepsi partnerships in cities could be, you know, in the millions of dollars of sponsorships each year. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm happy to share any of those contacts. Some of them also were suggesting that video screens, for example, if you drive by the Cravis Center in the last year, they have a video screen outside on Okeechobee that is, you know, basically advertising their shows to come. But that why couldn't we also have things like that that could be, you know, advertising our events? But also, you know, if we have a road closure, but also we could be selling advertising there too. I just wanted to mention that there are other opportunities. You know, when I first did bring this up last year is because we were having very difficult budget discussions. And I was thinking, you know, I'm in the marketing business, so always looking for opportunities that we might be able to take advantage of. So I just wanted to mention that there are those other kind of things that kind of could go along with, um, with the naming opportunities. And I'm happy to share any contact info if you're interested.
And the other thing we got to consider, I mean, if we're going to be taking money from, whether it's major corporations or major, major individuals who are still alive and, you know, they, they may take at some point down the road some political positions that are inconsistent with some of the values of, of the city. And A, let's make sure that the process includes a monitoring, if you will, of their public views and some kind of, and I think this is what Commissioner Shof might have been getting to, some kind of out if we decide that, you know what, the money's not worth it. So I, I throw that out there as well because these are very interesting political times in which we live. And, uh, sometimes those with a lot of money can try to throw their weight around, not only with naming rights, but in other areas that may be inconsistent with what we stand for as a city. So we, we need to make sure we have a, uh, an, an, an out.
Thank you, Mayor. Noted.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I think that that's important. We talk about what the values of our city are and that these folks, um, agree with that as well. Question, because we mentioned about parks and, you know, not charging and just doing this as an honorary. But what about events? Don't we offer sponsorship, like for the fireworks or at least the stage sponsored this past weekend? And so do we have those criteria in place for those sponsorships?
We have sponsorship agreements that we enter into routinely for the events. I can tell you on Fourth on Flagler, I did a quick survey of, of the sponsorship agreements that I saw. We had one with Burkhart Construction, Bilbon LP, H Greg One, FPL, Sandy James Fine Foods, the Solid Waste Authority, the Town of Palm Beach, Discover Palm Beaches. And if I left anyone off, I, I apologize, but that was a quick view of, of the contracts that our office processed to, as sponsorship agreements for the Fourth on Flagler. And Leah?
Yes, sure. So we have an individual that goes out and that, um, secures our sponsorships. As city employees, we've been told that we cannot solicit for sponsors. So we, we have under contract an individual who goes out and she, she beats the streets. I mean, she goes and walks indoors and, and talks to everyone and says, hey, do you want to be a part of this? And she, it's the gamut from small business to big corporations. And, um, for instance, this year's sponsorship, we, the money that we brought in for sponsorships actually paid for all the direct costs of the event. So the city isn't paying direct costs, they're just paying some of the indirect costs to do an event like Fourth on Flagler. So, um, so we do have somebody who goes out there and beats the streets from, you know, all the radio stations to the TV stations, to the local businesses, local and, um, national businesses. So we're very, very actively pursuing, or she is, sponsors from all gamuts. But, but, I mean, if somebody wants to sponsor something, they, they call us and say, hey, we want to be a part of this. And she goes out and she has that, that first meeting, that whole meeting to try and see at what level they are interested in sponsoring. And sometimes it's in-kind. If they don't have the cash, they can do some sort of in-kind sponsorship with us and still be included. So a small business might be able to provide a service to us and get an in-kind sponsorship and be included.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. So it sounds like we already have somewhat of this process in place for corporate sponsorships, but it's only related to events right now?
Currently, yes.
And do you, off the top of your head, have any idea of how much we bring in from that?
Oh, gosh. Um... I can get that to you. I should know off the top of my head.
That's all right.
Mary was standing right next to me. She would tell me. And I don't want to give you a number that's incorrect.
No problem. If I could get the cash as well as the in-kind amount, that would be helpful.
It's substantial.
Yeah, sounds like it. Great, thank you.
A, a tangential issue, and I know we talked about this at some point when I was on the commission, is the formation of supportive foundations, like for our parks and stuff. Where are we on that? For example, uh, you, you mentioned Curry Park or Drea Park. Would it be possible for a foundation to be created? And I know they do it in other cities, um, where I think the, what's the park in New York? The High Line or something like that. They've got a whole foundation that, that supports that, the maintenance and, 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 and stuff. Is that something we've looked at, uh, for any of our parks?
It's something that we've looked at for the entire park system as a whole. And, um, I, I, you know, I can only tell you that it is something that is high on my priority list, but I've been remiss and it, it kind of keeps falling down, but it needs to be very high on the list. And now with my new wonderful boss, Dr. Harris, I'm sure he can help me get there. But there are, and there's even a national, a national organization for parks foundations to help us get to where we need to go, um, to make it happen. And the Community Foundation in, that happens to be in West Palm Beach can help us also get there. So that's for the broad umbrella. Um, for instance, Drea Park itself is thinking about creating their own foundation. So they're working on that as well. So Chris Betancourt is also looking at possibly a foundation just for Curry Park. It has to be a substantial-sized park that would, um, that be, would be able to support a foundation because often foundations also need some funds to survive. So we're definitely, it's high on our priority list, Mayor.
Well, I would like, uh, to have these discussions kind of go parallel. Because as we're talking about, whether it's sponsorships or naming rights, uh, let's do it in the context. If we, if we're going to have a found, a single foundation for all parks or foundations for park-specific, uh, let's make sure we're kind of, uh, walking down both paths at the same time uh, to ensure that we're not at cross purposes.
And I agree. And one of my concerns about, um, individual park foundations is the inequity because there are some smaller parks that probably could use the support but would not have the ability to have a foundation. That's why I think it was important to first go and look at an umbrella parks foundation.
That's fine. I mean, I'd just like to see what you, you all can come back with. And before we finalize this part of the discussion, see if we can weave that into it. Uh, Mr. Frost, you seem to be moving toward the podium. I take it you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jack Frost. The, uh, about ten or twelve years ago, there was a foundation that was set up, you're correct. And it was for all the parks and also the cemeteries because there was thoughts that we could start doing cemetery tours similar to New Orleans. That started to get off the ground and then it became very difficult to actually get people involved who were willing to go out and raise the money and the funds and to be able to manage it. And it just sort of went by the wayside.
Okay. Thank you for that, uh, historical information. Anything else on this particular topic? So I guess, you know, the staff is looking for instruction. Is I read the room, certainly continue to look at ways, but maybe see how the foundation discussion goes as well? Is that kind of, did I misstate that? Uh, I mean, I think there's interest in exploring it.
Mayor, would you like for us to come back and have another discussion as it relates to the, um, a report back on the foundation together with reporting back with some of the scope of the identity of the, um, facilities that might be subject to the naming rights regulations and have a further conversation on, on...
Hold it down. I mean, I think there was a kind of a consensus that we'd like to at least see what specific types of opportunities might be, be there for naming. The big stuff, I think, is what we were talking about. So maybe we could come up with a plenary list, also to hear more about, uh, what plans, if any, there might be to continue the progress that was made with the creation of a, uh, system-wide park foundation.
And we also have, I still have all of the, um, the legal documents that really never were, I don't think they were officially filed with the state that we got the certificate for the foundation. But I have all the documents. I have the bylaws. Um, all we will need is for, um, people to actually be willing to serve, to create that board, to create, because you have to have all of that before you can file. So when that happened, that Mr. Frost spoke about, the commission at the time brought forward some names of individuals that they felt would be, um, good members or, or active members for a foundation. So if you know anybody out there that would be interested in helping us because you have to have that board in order to file for, um, for your 501(c)(3) as a foundation. So, um, please, and it's a 501(c) something, but, but, you know, that would be very helpful if you know individuals out in the community that, um, are movers and shakers that could make it happen more quickly.
Well, before we go there, let's, let's kind of get a better sense as to what was contemplated, the mission of the foundation, what types of things could be covered by foundation expenses, maybe the, the, the ballpark budget or fundraising goal. Let, let's kind of make sure this group is on board with the direction in which you're headed before we start identifying names, because there may be some tweaking that we want to do.
Absolutely. I, I would think so. It's been a while since those documents were created.
And, and on that note, Madam City Attorney, um, we might need a refresher from you or Norm as to what role we as commissioners and, and mayor could play in soliciting funds for that foundation. I don't know if there are ethical restrictions, you know. So, so do we know going into this what we can or can't do, uh, from a fundraising perspective?
We'll make that part of the presentation. It comes back to you.
If it's an official city foundation, I don't know. You guys tell us what we can do. Commissioners, is that, is that kind of, uh, uh, consistent with your understanding of next steps? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.